To order our regular school committee meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Thank you. Welcome to everyone who is here. Our first item of business is roll call, Kim. Everyone's present except Mrs. Broussard, unable to be here tonight. And I would just, I don't mean to embarrass Kim, but I would just like to take this opportunity, as you may or may not realize, Kim has, is new to us. It's been a couple of months, but for her to come in, I just wanted to say that I'm sure the others agree with me that she came in and she went right to work and she's doing a beautiful job with our minutes and the other things that she has to do. And so we want to thank you, Kim, that things are going really well and we're so glad to have you here. So we appreciate it. Okay. Now, our next item of, for the agenda is the approval of minutes. Superintendent.
Yes, you have three sets of minutes before you. The minutes for regular session of December tenth, two thousand and fourteen, and December twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, as well as executive session minutes from December twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, not to be released.
Okay. All right, so we would, I would accept a motion for the minutes. We'll take the second one. Mrs. Burns?
I recommend a motion to approve minutes of December tenth, two thousand and fourteen, regular session, minutes from December twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen.
Oh, let's take them, excuse me. Can we do them separately?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
December tenth, two thousand and fourteen, regular session.
Okay, do we have a second? Mr. Mullis, all those in favor? Okay. Five in favor, one abstain? Yeah, from absence. Uh-oh.
Yeah, I should probably abstain as well.
Okay. So we'll have, we always disagree on this, whether you need to or not. You really don't need to. You don't need to, but we'll figure this out afterwards. All right. So that'll be four in favor, two abstain. Thank you, Kim. Number two, second one, Mrs. Burns?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from December twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, regular session, and approval of minutes, December twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, executive session, not for release.
Okay. Mr. Mullis?
Second.
Oh, we didn't do, oh, first, second, yes, thank you, sorry. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Five in favor, one abstain. Mrs. Bonish was not present. Okay.
The next item on the agenda is, the consent agenda is acceptance of a donation. This is a donation that was made by the New Houses and in the amount of sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. They very generously offered to fund the expense for our staff members who were interested in attending the Federation of Special Needs Conference that's coming up on March fifth, I believe it is, it's a Saturday. They got twenty-two staff members who were interested in attending, which is fantastic. They initially had put out the offer to fund four. When we got that overwhelming response, they came up with the additional funding and this is to fund their, the attendance of staff at that conference.
Wow, that's fantastic on both their parts. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Mullis?
I make a motion to approve the acceptance of donation from the New House family for the amount of one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, and second, Mrs. Bonish, all those in favor? With our gratitude for sure, thank you. Okay, unanimous, Kim.
And you have before you warrants G four oh three, G four oh four, R two oh seven, R two oh eight, L fourteen, L fifteen, L sixteen, L seventeen, and L eighteen for approval.
Okay, we'll accept a motion for those. Mrs. Bonish?
I'll make a three.
Okay. So moved. Yeah. Second, Mrs. Carroll. My mind blanked for a minute, sorry. All those in favor? Unanimous, Kim.
And you have payroll warrants twelve seventeen, two thousand and fourteen, and twelve thirty-one, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, you accept a motion, Mrs. Burns?
I sec, I make motion for warrants payroll twelve seventeen and twelve thirty-one, two thousand and fourteen.
Second, Mr. Bjork. All those in favor? Okay, four in favor, two abstain. Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane.
You can take the next two, next two warrants are CB oh three and sped oh seven.
Okay. Mr. Bjork?
I move that we accept warrants CB oh three and sped oh seven.
Okay, and second, Mrs. Carroll? All those in favor? Okay, five in favor, one abstain. Mrs. Burns? And the last one?
Is warrant FS oh seven.
Mrs. Burns?
I make a motion to accept FS oh seven warrant.
Okay, second, Mr., Mrs. Bonish? Second, all those in favor? Five in favor and one abstain, Mrs. Carroll? Thank you. Once we get past that part, I'm, we have got to do something about these warrants. All right, our next item of business, I'm going to ask that, our student representatives are not here tonight, so we come out to, they're having tests.
Exam week.
Exam, exam week. Good, they're home studying. So we come to the superintendent's report and because we have such a large audience tonight and for a specific topic, where I'm going to ask that the school committee agree to change the items on the agenda and to move up six A for the capital improvement plan. Could I have a motion to do that? Mrs. Burns?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Bjork. Okay, all those in favor? Great, thank you. So we have to get us, still on the end of our packet here.
Yes. And you, you've seen this plan, this capital plan before and I think that everything was, the committee had accepted everything that was part of that. The questions that remained from the last meeting and the prior meeting were around the Envision Math Program that's included in the capital plan, the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars and change. And since that time, we've had presentations and I think school committee members have had the opportunity to actually visit a classroom, Miss LoJack's classroom, to see the Envisions program being taught to a classroom at North Intermediate School. So with that, I don't know if there are additional questions regarding the capital plan before we take that up.
Yes, oh no, your hands down, okay. Could I ask, WCTV, could you just paint a picture for our, we're so proud of you that you would come out tonight, it's icy outside. Hope you're very careful going home when we're finished with this part. But we're so proud of you that you, you are giving us the information we need to make an informed decision and you're so eager and passionate about it and we're thrilled. And Mrs. LoJack, I'm going to embarrass you, do you mind standing up? Because she's who we saw. And it's been a long time since I was in the classroom and I have to tell you, the time flew. I can't tell you how many best practices, I think there, I count, I stopped count at eight best practices during that hour and a half. You, we saw twenty children who nev, it was incredible. They never took their eyes off their teacher or their work. They noticed we came in. They also had a couple, it was an inclusion classroom, so there were a couple of other teachers who came in. There was no, it was almost like she knew when they were ready to go on to the next activity. And they used their whiteboards, they did teamwork, they did a game at the end to kind of pull everything together. They had a tiny little video that was just perfect size. It was incredible, Mrs. Broussard asked me to also thank you, she's not able to be here tonight, but it was so interesting.
I couldn't agree more, I couldn't agree more. I thank you again for allowing us in your classroom to.
And we do know that she would say that she represents all of you, which she did very nicely. And so we appreciate that and this, I think this is the way things should be done with, when we're trying to make a big decision like this, so that we all know. And I honestly feel that because you want it, it's going to be successful. And I think that's important. So that, I would entertain a motion then to accept the, do you understand that we can't accept the program? We accept the funds to cover the program, that's why we've had to do it this way. And we always wait for one meeting to be able to discuss it and then come back. So that we had the last meeting, we talked about it, this meeting we talk about it and we vote on it. So that's how we, we've done this. So I'd entertain a motion to, wait a second. There it is. Entertain a motion to approve the FY sixteen to FY twenty capital improvement requests. Do you have a motion?
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY sixteen to FY twenty capital improvement requests.
Okay, and Mr. Mullis, second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, Kim. Thank you so much. So now we're going to get used to seeing you here, so we might have to come with something else. But we appreciate you taking the time to come tonight and feel free, if that was your issue, to feel free to be careful on your way out. Don't worry about leaving.
Thank you.
Yes. That would be, yeah. Okay. And the next thing we're going to take out of order, could I have a motion for the school committee to take the literacy committee presentation next? So that that's, we have a lot of people here for that too. Mrs. Bonish?
I'll make a motion to move the literacy committee presentation to now.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mrs. Carroll, okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. So, welcome, come forward, feel free to, I don't know which way you decided to do this.
Yes, actually, so I just want a couple of opening remarks here with respect to the literacy plan. This is work that was begun, actually started in June, I believe, under, under the direction of Dr. Burnham. And this is an effort on the part of, a collaborative effort on the part of instructional staff throughout the district to be able to come up with a plan that really articulates the improvement goals around literacy for the district and comes up with a clear cohesive comprehensive plan for how we address literacy and its connection to ELA K through twelve within this district. And it's something that obviously is a need in this district and I think this is a great example of showing that, you know, teachers collaborating together to develop this plan is what really makes sense in terms of addressing curriculum and initiatives in the district. So they've been working hard, I will say that the plan that they're presenting is a preliminary plan. We still have other steps involved in this process, including most importantly, to share this information with the staff in the district and to have, to get their input and to continue to have collaborative discussions around this. But my goal is over the next several months to bring to the school committee all the various district committees that we have in place in the district to be able to report out to you from the school safety committee to the school climate and culture committee, to the behavioral health task force that was newly formed. And so I've asked Dr. Burnham and the literacy plan committee to come forward first and to present to you the work that they've been doing around literacy.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
So I'd like to start by giving you a little bit of background information for why it's important for us to do this work. First off, I'd like to recognize all of the staff that are involved in this particular committee. I see this as an overarching committee, this is really a committee that's steering the work. Over time, more of our faculty will be joining in the work. So you might see by the time we're finished with a fully documented plan, a list of staff longer than this on the finished product. So the purpose here is to be able to articulate our literacy improvement goals in a comprehensive and systemic way and connect the work that's being done at each level and between levels across the district. We also want to establish consistency across the district in terms of the programs that we're implementing, the types of supports that we are offering. And we want to provide structure and context for the teaching and learning in ELA. We're also providing a compass, if you will, for short-term district planning as well as long-term district planning. This data is nothing new, you've seen this earlier in the year. We know that over the last many years, our performance in ELA has been flat. We know that our non-high needs group outperforms our high needs group in many cases by double when we look at the percentage of students scoring proficient and advanced. We know that our high needs students struggle with open response, vocabulary, and the reading anchor standard. We also know that our students with disabilities are falling behind with targets, annual targets, particularly at the middle school and Shawshin. Ames Web is something that you've heard me talk about before. It's one of the reading assessments that we do. And since I'm going to show you some data in a moment, I figured it was worth revisiting what this assessment is. It's a general outcome measurement, it's used for universal screening, it's also used for progress monitoring. It's a form of a curriculum-based measurement. And it measures the overall performance in skills such as letter naming fluency, letter sound fluency, phoneme segmentation fluency, and nonsense word fluency. And it does draw on thirty years of scientific research and it's been found to be an accurate prediction of reading achievement. We also have been talking over the last several years about a tiered instructional model. Tier one is the core instruction, that's your whole group instruction in a classroom. Tier two is small group instruction and you target specific instructional strategies to benefit those students particularly falling below grade level. Tier three, that's where you get into more intensive individualized instruction. Those are your students who are falling well below grade level. However, all of these tiers are provided within the general education classroom. We're not talking about special education services here. When we look at the data that we have for our Title I program, we use the Ames Web Spring Benchmark. We can see from that data, last year at the Shawshin, which is our Title I school, that the second grade showed a twenty-two percent decrease in the number of students below grade level. Those are the students that were in tier two. So we know that the interventions that we're providing are decreasing the numbers of students in that tier. However, even with that bit of success, we know that fifty-six percent of the students receiving some intervention remain in tier two and that's really not ideal. So we know that we are not having the desired impact on all the students that are falling below grade level. We can do a better job. This is the type of report that you can generate from the Ames Web Assessment. You can see the tiers are outlined in the triangle. The idea being that you want to see the majority of your students in the green zone, fewer in the yellow zone, and even fewer in the red zone, or ideally, none at all in the red zone. You can see here from the winter assessment for the first grade last year, you had seven point three percent students in tier three with sixty-three percent of the students in tier two. That means that sixty-three percent of those students were below grade level. But you could see by springtime, we had a shift in the number of students in tier three on grade level and a reduction in the number of students that were below grade level and even a more significant reduction in the number of students that were well below grade level in the red part of the triangle at the top. We also know our special education data tells us that we have fifteen point seven percent of our students K five on an individualized education plan, that's an IEP. And that is slightly below the state average. We feel that better literacy support for students at the earliest grades will result in students receiving interventions to make effective progress, which ultimately will result in more accurate identification of students for special education. So at this point, I would turn it over to the literacy committee members who are here, who have agreed to present for us tonight. Holly Dennis Shavitz and Sasha Cody are just two of the members of this, this literacy plan committee. We have a few others in the audience. Linda Cornell is, is sitting out in the audience tonight as well as Kathy Mackless and Christine McMenamin. So I'll turn over the, the rest of the program to Holly.
I'm a reading specialist at the Woburn Street and I work with grades one and two. Another thing that we looked at was addressing deficiencies, specifically with the design and delivery of a tiered model of balanced literacy. And also looking at standardized means of assessment. And really looking at the importance of early intervention for children who are experiencing reading difficulties at the early grades. And we know how important early intervention is because when students reach third grade and are still experiencing difficulties, the research shows that they could have continued difficulties going forward through their schooling. So the literacy plan that we've developed really addresses four key areas that represent best practices of literacy development. And those four areas are the systemic use of data, standardized, standards-based curriculum, tiered system of instruction, and the family and community involvement. And the plan outlines key supports the district will need to put in place to ensure that the literacy goals are met. And those supports are the district structures to support literacy, professional development with regard to literacy, and resource allocation, protocols and procedures that will be necessary to meet these goals. So there were four stages in the literacy plan development. In stage one, the committee was formed in June of two thousand and fourteen and it's comprised of a small group of educators from reading specialists, special education teachers, general education classroom teachers, and administrators. And the committee really looked at what our vision is for balanced literacy in the district K to twelve with an initial focus on the elementary grades. In stage two, we assessed the current reality of literacy in Wilmington with regard to the key areas of literacy development. And we looked at assessment data that supports literacy instruction. And we looked at the status of the K twelve standards-based curriculum and also instructional practices that are in place to support literacy. And we also looked at district supports that are in place or needed to support the literacy goals of the plan. In stage three, we developed a multi-year action plan to bridge the gap between the current reality and the district's vision for literacy instruction. And the multi-year plan provides a framework which has been used to plan for and prioritize district resources to support the literacy goals. And in stage four, task-oriented groups were developed and the committee identified tasks which really need to be completed in year one of the plan. And this current school year is year one of the plan. And these steps would provide a foundation for the action plans in years two through five. And those working groups that were created was first the literacy plan steering committee, which developed a draft of the district literacy plan. And of course, we have the elementary and secondary vertical ELA teams, which have been piloting the DESE's model curriculum units. And kicking off on February third, some task groups will tackle portions of the district literacy or to support the district literacy plan. Group one will develop and select district writing rubrics. Group two will create curriculum maps with a scope, sequence, and pacing. Task group three will create standards-based report cards for ELA. And group four will create standard-based units. And the intended outcomes for this work are to have a document that really clearly outlines the district vision for literacy instruction, K through five, and articulates the elements of the district's literacy program. Also, to develop all elements of a standards-based literacy curriculum, to identify priorities for each stage of the multi-year plan, to identify criteria for establishing tiers and appropriate intervention for those tiers, to work with classroom teachers, reading specialists, and special education teachers to ensure that the district programming offers coherent progression of supports from the general education classroom to reading support services and special education support services. And finally, we'll develop a plan to, for sustained professional development to support the literacy program over the five-year plan. The two overarching goals of the district literacy plan are really to increase performance of all students, but especially to close that achievement gap between our high needs and our non-high needs groups.
Just a quick question. I see here that the, under the intended outcomes, you said K to five, but in here it says K to twelve. And I know that we're focusing on the elementary piece. Now, is the first five years just the K through five piece or?
Right now, in the planning stages, the, the five-year plan that you have in front of you right now, you'll see that it's pretty filled in for years one, two, and even for three. It gets a little bit leaner for years four and five. We will kind of revisit and fill that out based on a constant assessment of what we've accomplished annually, what our, what our original target was for the upcoming year and whether or not we are ready to move there or if we need to fill in more gap in order to be able to move forward. The idea is to have an outline for K twelve. Again, right now, we're focusing on making sure that the foundation is solid.
Right, very good.
But it will, it will be a vision for K twelve.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
One of the things is, it's constantly concerning me, as we know, is the middle school. And I'm wondering, I know we do have reading teachers beyond grade five. Do we only have like two or three beyond grade, how many do we have?
Three at the middle school?
Three in the middle.
And any in the high school?
No reading teachers at the high school, no.
Okay. Because I have to say that this was part of my, I am a certified reading teacher and I didn't mean to be, I just wanted to help my ninth graders read better. So I wanted to get professional development, which was not offered to us. So I ended up getting my masters in that. And by the time I was done, three years later, I was the reading teacher in the ninth grade. Had to say, had to tell them that I was going to have to let go of my reading certification because that's not what I wanted, it was, I wanted to combine both things. And I only tell you this about myself because it concerns me. One of you, I think you might have said it Kate before, that you, you have to get this done in the early years. And that to spend your time in the ninth grade doing a reading program makes no sense at all. And I'm wondering how with the three reading teachers we now have in the middle school, do they have someone in charge of them? Do they have a curriculum? Do they know what's, what's happening or? That's what I, I'm concerned about.
They do, they fall under the direction of Dr. Mackless, who, who does work with them on, on a fairly regular basis. You've been including them in the ELA department meetings.
I think it's a little bit different because I think that the transition from fifth to sixth grade is huge. And I think we are in the process of looking at interventions and how interventions can be built in so that the reading specialists on the middle school level function a little differently than they do on the elementary level. Although we are working for a seamless integration and part of that, part of what Dr. Burnham and our wonderful candidates here discussing, there needs to be systematic phonics instruction. So we're not dealing with those foundational issues in grade six. I hear every word that you're saying. We, we're looking at that more closely and there probably will be some changes as we move through the year.
Excellent. And then the other thing I want to ask, what kind of testing when they're in first, second, third grade? Is it verbal one-on-one to the teacher or is, is there writing involved? What kind to, in order to get your statistics, what is the type of testing that's being given?
You want to speak to that one more?
Sure. Well, we have two assessments that we give. One is Ames Web, which was outlined earlier in the presentation. And that's done one-on-one with a child, it's timed. And depending on the grade level determines what portions of the assessment they're given. So in kindergarten, they're going to be given letter naming, whereas in second grade, they're not going to be doing that. But that's a timed test. The other assessment that we use is the Fountas and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System, which is a very detailed assessment that gives us a wonderful picture of where our students are gives us a wonderful picture of where our students are as readers. It gives us very accurate information that we can then use and say, this student is very strong in these areas as a reader, but needs support in these areas as a reader, whether they're reading below level, on level, or above level. And in the five-year plan, you'll notice in the professional development portion that that's a focus because it takes time and training and professional development for us to be consistent in our administration of the assessment and consistent with each other with the results. So, that's something we are definitely going to move for, getting that professional development.
That was the reason why I was asking about it was because if they're doing one-on-one to a teacher, an individual teacher, the consistency's got to be really hard to maintain, I would think.
Yeah. Well, there are very good rubrics within the assessment that help you to determine the score. And it's also for the Fountas and Pennell assessment, the student reads a story to you, most of it out loud. It depends on the grade level where you're determining an accuracy score. And then you do comprehension, and there's three levels of comprehension, from very literal comprehension, which is within the text, to really more inferential thinking, which is beyond and about the text. So, you really get a good picture of the student. And there is a writing portion of that assessment, too.
I do know that that's quality work from the Fountas-Pennell.
Absolutely.
That's well, you know, well-received. And Lesley University, coming through there, it's been highly rated. So, I think that's excellent. And my last thing is, in one area, you mentioned kindergarten in the report, but then I noticed no kindergarten teachers are on the group yet, are in the group yet. Do the kindergarteners have a special place at this point, or are they going to be, will it be starting with the kindergarteners?
We are including the kindergarteners. You'll see with the foundations portion of the phonics.
I noticed that you said foundations. That was cute.
We would like to see that phonics program implemented K-2. But we're very cognizant of the heavy demands that are being placed upon the kindergarten teachers right now with the kindergarten entry assessment that they have to do for the state. So, while they're getting more comfortable with that and managing that, we decided to delay introducing a new program at the kindergarten level for next year and start with grade one. In the next year of the plan, you'll see that the priority grade is to move forward with kindergarten. But we're trying to balance moving forward in a way that doesn't overload the teachers to a point that they can't be effective in any realm of their teaching. We have to be careful.
Trying to keep them in the boat, recalling the graphics from my opening day speech. And out of the water. They have a lot of, the MKEA.
It's a significant amount of work for them this year.
I've heard that, yes. Well, I think it's excellent because you're making really thoughtful decisions. It appears that you're making thoughtful decisions for each of the grade levels. We're doing differentiated presentation within the elementary schools.
Right. I mean, ideally, if the kindergarten teachers weren't experiencing all those demands, it would make sense to start with the kindergarten. But by delaying it a year isn't going to have a major impact. So, we're going to delay introducing something new for the kindergarten by a year.
That makes sense. Does anyone else, we all? Thank you. That was excellent once again. And we're so pleased that you all came out tonight to support that.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, we're going to go next to the high school program of studies. Right down there. We're not taking more votes. We're changing it. Thank you.
And with us this evening to present the Wilmington High School Program of Studies for the 2015-16 school year are Wilmington High School Principal, Linda Peters, and Wilmington High School Assistant Principal, Dennis Mahoney.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to mention, I didn't get to tell you yet, I found the paper for when we did this before, and we did it May 28th. That's why it seems such a short time ago. We had, we were off last year. And so...
Don't remember that.
Not that it matters, but so Mrs. Delai knows.
Yeah, we are, we're making a concerted effort this year to make sure that schedules for next year are out before the conclusion of the school year. And so, having this in place is very crucial to being able to kind of meet that deadline.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I listed the changes that were made. And there really are not too many, but I will explain the major changes. We did add a statement on page six, just to clarify that if a student withdraws from a course, that we do not award credits for that course. We don't have a partial credit system at the high school, so I did want to make that clear with that statement. We also had some pages eliminated from this year's or the proposed program of studies for next year that were including elsewhere. We have a, we had a section on career pathways. And it was a confusing, I guess, set of paragraphs that students really didn't know how to use that section. So, we are including it in a core section protocol, core selection protocol that guidance has developed. So, when they are working with students and interviewing them as they meet to go over their schedule requests, that they can talk through the career pathways with them. We also eliminated the 21st Century Skills page because I would like it, I'd like that included in our curriculum documents. And I would like that referred to more by teachers in creating their curriculum plans and also in working with their syllabus and their course planning. We added a section on pages nine and 10 on dual enrollment, which we have had in the past, but we had no guidelines and nothing that described that. And we met with Middlesex Community College regarding dual enrollment, and they helped us set up the guidelines for that program. It isn't a program for a lot of students, but it has benefited some of our students in the past. So, we did want to make sure everybody at least knew about it. We eliminated the college accounting course. This course hasn't run for several years. There has been no interest in it. So, we did eliminate it from next year's course. We are adding a statement regarding the school-to-career internship because we would like students to participate in this who already have a job before their senior year. And we also have changed the credits. We are changing the program slightly, but it is more on an internship than it is just a school-to-work. We are adding a student technology integration course. Since we are going to be having what is called a help desk or genius bar in the library in our new high school, we would like students to be in charge of that. And we are going to offer them a course in helping them to troubleshoot for teachers and for students. The first year of this course, I think it will end up to be a semester course, but the first year is for students who already have some knowledge of the programs for computers. And I think maybe we'll expand that at some point to include younger students. Right now, the younger students don't actually have a lot of time in their schedules to be taking a course like this. But we might add it to the course selection for the following year for younger students. We also have had very few students enrolled in our language arts workshop course, so we are eliminating that as well. We are adding a fourth-year math course that is called Modeling with Mathematics to provide a fourth year for students as a requirement. They have four years requirements. And some of them do have a difficult time in their fourth year with the fourth-year courses that we offer now. We're adding this as a project-based learning course, actually. So, they will be using math with hands-on projects. And it won't be as math-intensive as the other courses such as statistics or trig. We are, in the math area, also adding all our requirements for calculators as opposed to just informing students on the first day of class what their requirements are. We're adding them into the program. We have two types of calculators that we ask students to have. Scientific is all they need for geometry courses, but they do need graphing calculators for any algebra-based course. And that is part of the common core, actually. So, we do need them to have them. We do provide for students who don't have them. We do have several classroom sets as well. The visual arts department is changing the names of the Art I, Art II, and Art III courses to Studio Art I, Studio Art II, and Studio Art III. It's really just a change in name. The drawing and painting course, again, which hasn't run, we are eliminating. And Photo I is also not going to be taught anymore. We're going digital. So, we're not having a darkroom. We are adding an introduction to media production as a course because we are, with WCTV, we have equipment coming to our media productions room. And we are offering a course now to learn how to work with media production, television, videos, and so forth. The science and technology section, you know, Mr. Monaco spoke with his teachers, they wanted to include all of the courses as one department as opposed to separating science from technology. So, those two departments actually just merged into one from last year's program to the next year's. The World Religions and Cultures course has not changed, but it's just the description has changed. I think it's just being updated by the teacher. Couple of changes in names of social studies courses. Current Events is going to become Contemporary Issues. And the World War II semester courses, there are two, will be World War II Pacific and World War II Europe. We have eliminated the Field College course that actually hasn't run for us since it was put in. It's never really run, never had the interest. Most of the interest in the electives in science are environmental science and biotechnology. So, there was no need to run that course. And we are adding an additional humanities course. By the description of it, Theory of Human Understanding, it is a critical thinking course that focuses on the areas of knowledge as well as the ways of knowing. And by the description that I've read, I've never taken a course like this, although I'd love to, it's more of a philosophy course. It does incorporate debate, forming opinions, and trying to improve the way we structure our thoughts and ideas. There is some interest based on students' survey. We'll see what happens. But those are the major changes. Other than that, date changes, changes to the application for AP courses, just some date changes.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments, Mrs. Burnish?
So, I have a question about the student technology integration course. Did you say that's a year or a semester?
A semester.
Semester. So, if the students, so the students are maintaining the help desk. Are they the only ones maintaining the help desk, or is there somebody going to? So, in other words, if they're going to, if they're going to be there for one semester, and then another group will come in, so there'll be different people maintaining the help desk each, for each semester?
Yes.
Okay. I was just wondering about that. It sounds interesting to me.
Mrs. Burnish? I just want to reiterate, thank you again for responding to some of, I really greatly appreciate the clarification. But again, I just want to reiterate how happy I, to see that the Woodwin Ensemble Honors Course being added and seeing the performing arts, you know, course selection expanded. I think that's, I feel performing arts is instrumental to learning and to a lot of students.
We are lucky to have the teachers able to come to the high school to teach those courses, you know, especially the Woodwins course.
That's good to see. Thank you. Excellent. Every year, I think, we can't have much to change in this handbook because you go through it so thoroughly every single year. And then there it is again. So, interesting. It's nice that we're making some really interesting changes in some of the courses. I was feeling too bad that we don't have any more artists. It sounded like people aren't taking some of those courses.
It's just really the drawing and painting course.
Yeah, the drawing and painting.
Drawing and painting. Drawing itself is the foundation to art in stepping up to high levels. But in reading the other studio courses, that is still being.
It's being taught.
You can't totally eliminate that, especially going into design and things of that sort because that's kind of the foundation of that piece. But, so it's not lost, it's just shifted, I suppose.
Shifted, yeah. Excellent. All right, then. Thank you. Well, entertain a motion to accept the report on the Wilmington High School Program of Studies for the 2015-2016 school year. Oh, okay. Mr. Beard. And second, good, Mrs. Burnish. Thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Be careful.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you want to go back to the superintendent's report?
Yes, I think we should do that.
We'll do. All right.
Superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report, a few items for you. At your place this evening, I did leave for each of you a copy of the annual reports or the school department's contribution to the town's annual report. We sent that over to town hall today, and it will be incorporated into the annual report that gets distributed out to residents of Wilmington. I just wanted to report that we are, I guess, you know, in the spirit of Happy New Year to all, that the transition from the vacation back to school went very well. I had the opportunity, as did Dr. Burnham, to visit some schools. And I was actually quite amazed at how quickly kids jumped right back into work. So, all was well with that. I wanted to let you know that we also have formed now an official formed, fully-formed middle school principal screening committee. We sent that information out today in terms of the membership of that committee. And it includes per the timeline and procedure that I had handed out a month or so back. It includes representatives from district administration, building administrators from the intermediate level, middle level, high school level. It includes three members of the professional staff, two members of the support staff, and three parents from the Wilmington middle school community. So, we have a great representation amongst different grade levels as well as disciplines on that committee. So, they will hold their first organizational meeting next week on the 21st. They will, we will talk through what the process will look like. They will meet again prior to the interviews to develop questions. We've had the opportunity to have focus groups with the staff as well as parents to collect input on the qualities that they would like to see in the next middle school principal. That information gets transmitted to the screening committee. And that combined with the standards and indicators for effective administrators, that is, the Edivale rubric for principals, is used to develop specific questions by the screening committee to be posed to the candidates. So, that's where we are. And the... So that's where we are, and the interviews will be scheduled for February 10th. We'll do them all in one day. So that's where we are with the screening committee at this point. In terms of the high school, just wanted to give you an update on the high school. We are on track to open on time. I'm trying to think how many days right off the top of my head. Paul, is it maybe 20 days and counting here?
I don't want to count.
But I know I was, we were in the school, I was in the school last week towards, on Friday of last week, and, you know, on a day-to-day basis, as you go through that building, it's absolutely amazing how fast progress is going. Right now, at this point, I know when you look in the windows, for a long time, people were waiting anxiously to see ceiling tiles put in. It seemed like somewhat of a monumental milestone, and the ceiling tiles are in, the floor tiles are in. This week, what they're working on is to wash, clean, wash, and wax the floors, particularly in the second and third grade classrooms. Furniture is scheduled to begin arriving next month, this coming Monday, the 19th. I guess they are working on, I think they are going to start delivering actually on the 19th or the 20th. So it's all about preparing the classrooms to receive that furniture, and they will then move down to the first floor. The furnishings for the first floor and equipment are due to start arriving at the beginning of February, but you will see that progress is happening very quickly as they move to the cleanup and completion stages of the project. The high school building committee and school committee are offered the opportunity next Thursday, on July 22nd, to tour the high school. It should be in pretty good shape, and you'll probably start to see some furniture moving in, and we will meet at the Roman House at 4:00 PM to distribute hard hats until we're substantially complete. You still have to wear your hard hats.
How long would that take?
I'm assuming, depending on the number of questions, those tours have typically been taking about an hour and a half. But that said, you can also kind of speed through and come out of the tour at any point as well. So we are, we're hopeful that at that point, the elevators will be working. Right now, the elevators, the west elevator, which will be the main elevator, the elevator that we use for furniture delivery and distribution, is operational. The thing that is preventing the final inspection, final sign-off, is the ability to ensure that when the, with the fire alarm goes off, with the fire panel, that the elevator drops, which is what it's supposed to do, and they're still in the process of finalizing all of the fire alarm system. So if that is not completed by the time the furniture starts arriving, then the backup plan is always to engage an operator who will operate the elevator until such time as we have the sign-off from the state elevator inspector. So it's not that we won't have an elevator available, it'll just be a matter of whether we have an operator or we're able to operate that ourselves. So things are moving right along. One thing I did want to mention is there's been some discussion about a, when we may be providing the community with an opportunity to go through the building, and that's obviously very important to all of us. We have set a date of March 19th, that's a Thursday evening. We picked a Thursday so that it wouldn't conflict with any town board or committee meetings. Plan right now is a 3:00 to 8:00 PM timeframe that we will have the building open. We will have student ambassadors as well as staff who will be available to take folks on tours of the building. It will just be sort of, show up when you want to show up and get a tour of the building, and I'm sure that some of our parent support groups will probably take advantage of the opportunity to sell baked goods and coffee, et cetera, in the cafeteria so people can kind of mingle there and see that space before exiting the tour. So that's the plan right now. We'll begin advertising that that will be the case in the not-too-distant future, so people, because we are getting a lot of questions about when folks can come in. I think everyone's obviously very excited to get into the building, so. We have had, I think, just, this has come up, we have had a few challenges with the, a challenge really with the boilers at the high school. We continue to make the repairs and replace parts as it breaks down. We had one day this past week where the boiler actually was not operational for a couple hours during the day while it was being repaired. Certainly, we had some cold spots in the building, but at this point, obviously, we're working hard to keep the boilers functional, keep the temperatures where they need to be. We're obviously not going to replace the boilers at this point in time, but we are working hard. The public buildings department has been fantastic in terms of responding very quickly. There's some extra work that's going to happen tomorrow afternoon and evening, and hopefully the work that's done will keep the boilers chugging along for the next 20 or so days that we're in the building. That's it for my report, unless there are questions on that.
Any questions? No? Okay, good. Thank you.
Under new business, 5B, the SEEM collaborative annual report and audit, you have a copy in your packet of the SEEM annual report and audit. This is a requirement under collaboratives that they have to provide to the member districts. As you know, SEEM is a collaborative that we use not only for placement of some of our special education students, but we also use SEEM to provide us with professional development, other therapeutic services, as well as collaborating on some grants as well that they provide. The annual report really outlines the collaboratives' goals that they had for the last year, 2013-14, and as well as their progress towards those goals. We benefit significantly from our work with SEEM, and when you look at the report, what you'll see is that on average, we save anywhere from $7,000 to $40,000 per placement as compared to comparable placements by using the SEEM programs that are available to us. Included in here is also the audit, that is a requirement of collaboratives, and you will see if you read through that audit, that it is what we refer to as a clean audit in that there were no management findings with respect to any type of material deficiencies or internal controls that were lacking. No actions required, that's just informational.
Any questions? Well, so, okay.
5C, under new business, the FY '15 financial report, an update on where we are at this stage of the fiscal year, and I will refer that to Paul.
Thank you. This financial report was run effective December 29th. Our local appropriations, $34.8 million spent and encumbered. Subtracted from that, we have a balance right now of about $610,000. We're, we should be, we're doing very well, and we should be fine for this fiscal year. I have no concerns at all.
Good. Excellent. The next item is the personnel report, and again, I will turn that over to Mr. Ruggiero.
Thank you. We've provided to you a listing of employees that have left the district and their replacements and/or if we had to do some compliance issues, add staff. So since the last personnel report that you received, these are the incremental changes, if you will. It does not reflect movement of staff from between buildings, but this is just people that have been hired within the district.
Could I just ask, I didn't, this is, I hadn't seen this before, Pathways and one-to-one? Don't know what they are.
The Pathways is a program at the Shawshin School.
Oh, okay.
I think that's what that says. Oh, Shawshin School, and those children transition up to the West School. So it's a special education program, so that is an educational assistant that was necessary for that program. Actually, it was added to the West School.
Oh, okay.
And then one-to-one would be a one-to-one special education paraprofessional that was needed.
Okay.
And that was at the Wildwood School.
I wasn't thinking of that. Okay, great. Any other questions? Thank you.
And the final item under new business pertains to surplus property specifically at the high school. As you know, we have a lot of furniture and equipment in the high, in the old high school, and so we're doing what we need to do to be able to appropriately dispose of that property or reuse or recycle that property. A lot of the property, some of the property will be relocated over to the new high school, not a significant amount, but some certainly will be moved over to there. A lot of the property has been claimed by other schools in the district, and in fact, I think if you look around this room, for example, Shawshin A7, they've gone around and put post-its and labels on all the furniture that they've claimed for their buildings.
Someone could wreak havoc.
So all those, all of that furniture that's, and equipment that's been claimed by other buildings will be moved by the relocation contractor to those various buildings as part of the move process that happens over February break. Once schools came through and claimed what they were looking for, we then had town departments come through, and town departments labeled things that they were interested in taking back to their buildings as well. So you have, in your packet, you have a list of items that were claimed by various town departments, and you can see where that furniture will be transferred to. And then finally, the last list you have is a list of surplus furniture, which this, this equipment and this furniture will be handled by the relocation vendor, and what they have, that contract actually has a subcontract to it. What they will do is they will work with companies that actually come in, and they are basically facilitator of charitable donations. So they take this equipment typically and this furniture, and they find charitable organizations who are looking for this type of furniture and equipment. A lot of times, it ends up being schools that are outside the country, that are in developing countries where, right now, for example, classrooms, they told me about a place they took furnishings where kids are currently sitting on the floor, and so for them to get desks, even in the condition that our desks are in, is quite a nice thing for them, so from an educational standpoint. So we're excited to be able to access that type of a process, to be able to see that equipment being, and furniture being put to such good use. So in order to effectuate these changes, what we would need for the school committee to do is to first declare this property that's being transferred to the town and the property that will eventually be donated to charitable organizations, to declare the property surplus. And then from there, we would ask that the school committee essentially authorize the town manager to dispose of the property as appropriate, and this is in accordance with both state regulations as well as the local bylaw, as the town manager is the chief procurement officer for the municipality.
Okay. So we have the paper. So the first motion would be the school committee, I would entertain a motion that the school committee declares the current Wilmington High School property outlined in the attached two documents as surplus property. Mr. Bjork.
I move that the school committee declares the current Wilmington High School property outlined in the attached two documents as surplus property.
Okay, do we have a second? Second, Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right. And the second motion would be, the school committee confirms that the town manager is authorized to dispose of high school property deemed surplus by first offering such property to other district schools and then to town departments. Any remaining surplus property will then be donated to charitable organizations through the relocation services process. Mrs. Burnish?
So moved.
Okay. Second, Mrs. Burns. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone.
Yes, thank you.
It's a good thing, since they voted Monday night, to accept it. The selection. That was interesting.
And under old business, we've already taken up the capital plan. The last item is an update on the FY 2016 superintendent's preliminary budget. What I provided to you in your packet is an analysis that I went through with Mr. Ruggiero after our discussions with the town manager and the town accountant. As you know, our initial budget that we presented on December 14th was a 5.49% increase over the FY 2015 adopted budget. Based on our conversations, the town manager asked if I would develop an analysis that would show how we would get from 5.49% potentially down to 3.5%. That was based on sort of their initial analysis of the, and projections of revenues that, for the town, for FY '16. I've provided that analysis to him, and I provided that analysis to you as well. What you will see in the analysis that I provided to you is a priority listing, if you will, of how we would effectuate those reductions should we have to get down to 3.5%. It would, some of it would include just transferring some expense, for example, foundations, which I think is a very critical expense. It's not that it's a low priority item, but we have the ability through discussions with the town manager to move that into the capital plan, and we would defer some of the technology projects that we currently have in FY '16 over to FY '17 to be able to open up that funding. There are some things that we would eliminate, the Phos Science Kit being one of those things, so we would not purchase the kits for grades one, two, and four. Transportation, in this case, currently, we have used a projected increase of 5% with respect to the rebid. We were going to be rebidding that contract, so we don't know what the increase will be. We assumed 5%. We've reduced that assumption to 2.5%. I think we're all keeping our fingers crossed that low gasoline crisis might work in our favor at this time, so. Curriculum and professional development, this certainly is not an easy reduction, but we are reducing the increase. There was an increase proposed of $52,000. We're reducing the increase from $52,000 to $25,000. We would have to strategically pick areas that we would not offer professional development in, and I would not offer up, based on what we heard today, math or literacy as an option, but we would cut professional development because that's vitally important that we address those as part of the work that we're doing. Circuit breaker, we would propose to increase the offset to circuit breaker. Certainly, we can dip into the offset. The concern is always making sure that we, you know, that the long-term sustainability of that fund is secure, and we would look to potentially increase the use of some other offsets as well. With respect to the special education assistance, what we would do there is, we need additional educational assistance, but we would propose to look at the staffing for other programs and to reduce in some areas to be able to fill these other critical positions, so essentially redistributing the existing educational assistance that we have. We would look to cut $85,000 out of instructional technology, textbooks, materials, and supplies. This is obviously not an easy cut to make. It will have an impact on the classroom. We will try as much as possible to strategically purchase things this year that might carry us into next year, but nonetheless, we would see a reduction, and much of that, just due to the size of the cut, would likely come from technology, given the size of the various budgets. Once we drop below that cut, which takes us to a 4.25% increase versus a 5.49% increase, then we start getting into staffing reductions, which is not a direction I necessarily would like to head in, but if we had to cut further than 4.25%, we would look to eliminate 1.6 FTE positions to be able to create the funding for the pre-K to V literacy specialist and the 0.6 FTE high school technology integration specialist. To me, these positions are vital, and if we had to look at other positions, eliminating other positions to create those, based on what we heard today about the gaps and deficiencies that we're looking to address with respect to literacy, it's vitally important that we have a specialist in this area to be able to support the teachers in that work. Again, I think you'd all agree that, given the amount of technology and the direction that our new Wilmington High School is going in, to have a building that was not supported with a technology integration specialist would mean that we would not, we would not be making great use of the technology resources available to us in that building. So we would look to other areas that would potentially result in elimination of programs, electives, or increases in class sizes, which elimination of electives typically will have the result at the secondary level of increasing class sizes. Once we drop below that, these are cuts that I would be very hesitant to make, and so at this point, what I've recommended, what I've suggested to the town managers, that my final recommended budget will be for an increase of 4%, not quite the 3.5%. The town accountant has said that there are some areas, some revenue areas, that he can look at, some assumptions that were made that may be able to be adjusted. So I think we'll hear more about that on February 2nd, when the town manager presents his budget, and based on what we hear on February 2nd, we'll make the necessary changes to our budget to present to you a final superintendent's recommended budget on February 11th. to present to you a final superintendent's recommended budget on February 11th.
Because we don't read below the line. Mrs. Burns.
I have just a couple of questions, because I, Paul has been such a juggler, especially with circuit breakers, and I know that a lot of that, it's quite difficult because, you know, with the state still preparing their budget and determining funding for those, for that. And as we saw in this past 9C budget cut, the circuit breaker money was taken back. So, you have these budgets that are prepared with the hopes. With this, if we have to cut, so we're, is it, we're increasing it? Is that what we're doing?
We're increasing the use of the offset. I don't know, Paul, if you want to go into that in more detail.
We each year receive circuit breaker reimbursements that we use to offset certain tuition expenses. So, in this budget, we've increased that offset, or we've, we will charge additional tuitions against the circuit breaker funds, and we increased it by $160,000. Right now, we should be fine doing that. I projected FY 16, it's a rudimentary projection, but I've averaged over the last five years, in one or two of those years, we had a reimbursement rate of about 45%. Typically, typically, it's, well, it has been 75%. During a few years, it went down as low as 45%. It's been back up to the 70 to 75% the last couple of years. So, I think my projection's conservative. So, the use of that pool of money, I'm comfortable with the ability to do that. I know that there was talks about, yeah.
With a lot of these partially-funded or unfunded mandates, and that was a kind of another question that I kind of wanted to ask you that came up in the literacy piece with regards to the kindergarten assessment. Is that an unfunded mandate also brought down from the state? Or is it partially funded?
That's actually a requirement of the full-day kindergarten quality grant. So, any grant, any community, district that receives that grant has to implement that. But communities who don't get those grant fundings do not, at this time, have to implement that.
Was that a new standard, or was that a part of the grant in when we went forward initially with 70?
I don't think it was part of it initially. It was something that was added.
Was, okay, that's what I'm looking for. So, it could deem as a unfunded benefit of a grant. I guess. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and then, any other questions? All right, so we need, no. We don't need anything. Excellent. All right. We are up to, I have to put on my glasses to see if there's any public comments left. Public comment? Okay, other reports? I think at this point, no. Yes?
I have a last report.
Mrs. Carroll. Okay, great.
Just that we're going to be starting our spelling bee, I believe, in March. Tom, I think it's the first, the fifth, right? Yeah. So, we're going to be starting. So, if anybody wants to be involved, please contact one of us, and we'll get you in. We really don't have any information. We're still starting. There'll be many more information coming in. Yeah, save the date, that's right. Save the date, March 5th. Thank you.
Anything else? Mrs. Brasad, Mrs. Burns, and myself, we're moving along on this, we're redoing that school committee handbook, and we're moving along, making progress.
Almost done, actually, with the.
Yeah, it's almost done.
Yeah.
So, we should be bringing it to you soon. And I think that was it. No policy right now. Okay, other reports, correspondence. We've passed along, we have a nice, thank you, we won't read it, but it's a nice thank you for us, for the board. You can pass it along if the others didn't see it. For, at the holiday season. It was very nice. Thank you. Our next item is future meeting dates and agenda items. The first one, for WCTV, January 28th meeting is going to be a workshop. It's going to be informal. We're not going to have it televised. So, that will be just for the committee that night. And then, on February 2nd, even more so since we won't know until that night, it was really important that we attend the town manager's budget presentation, as we always try to do. So, we'll see that on February 2nd, Room 9, at 7:00. If anything changes, Mary will get the information to us. And then, our next meeting, actual meeting, will be February 11th, and then, February 25th. I thought that was interesting, that our meeting falls in the day after. That's perfect timing. The day after, except for the people who are helping getting us there.
It depends on who you talk to.
We'll make it a very slight agenda that night, if at all. But everybody will be wanting to know, you know, how things went, and it's a unique time in Wilmington. So, I think people will want to know how everything worked out. Okay, all right. So, anything else?
I did just want to, you just, when you said the 25th, it reminded me of something else, is that we did meet as a kindergarten preschool team in terms of registration. Typically, kindergarten registration has happened, not registration, but kindergarten orientation has happened in August, and we've decided to move that back. So, kindergarten orientation for parents and preschool orientation will happen on February the 24th, and that will then allow parents to have all the information they need prior to kindergarten registration, which starts in early March. So, we will actually have a nice orientation. They'll still have something in August for parents when they're transitioning in, but this way, all of their questions regarding kindergarten registration, preschool registration will be asked, and they will be able to go through that pile of forms that they have to fill out so they understand what's necessary to be able to register their children.
And now, it's just the beginning with the forms. Excellent. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Burns.
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Carroll. All those in favor? Unanimous, Kim. Thank you very much.